Good afternoon and welcome to the City of Spokane City Council briefing session for August 16th. We'll also be briefing August 23rd today, and I will turn to Clerk Fister for the roll call.
Ms. Mum?
Here.
Council President Beggs?
I don't, I didn't hear anything, but I, I'm assuming she was calling you next.
Go ahead.
Okay, let me start again. Council President Protam Mum?
Here.
Council President Beggs?
Here.
Council Member Burke?
Here.
Council Member Cathcart?
Present.
Council Member Kinnear?
Present.
Council Member Stratton?
Here.
Council Member Wilkerson?
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. We now go to City Attorney Mike Ormsby for briefing the advanced council agenda.
Thank you, Council President Protam. For the August 23rd meeting on the consent agenda, first we have a value blanket for ballistic body armor, and Jennifer Hammond from Police is here to brief this.
Good afternoon. This value blanket is for $210,000 for a period of two years. The term is August 1st to 2021 to July 31st, 2023.
Any questions for Jennifer? Okay, next is a proposed contract with the Sheriff's Office for the WASPIC money for the registered sex offender. Sid has me down to report this, but Mike McNabb's actually on the phone, and he probably knows far more about it than I do. So, Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, Council. This is a renewal of our contract as a sub-recipient through the Spokane County Sheriff's Office who receives money from WASPIC for address verifications for registered sex offenders in the city. Our award is a total of $60,000, $57,000 for salary and benefits, and $3,000 for training. The grant period is July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Okay, next we'll move to the purchase of insurance for calendar, for insurance year September 1st through August 31st of 2022. As I've reported to the Council President and Council President Protam, we're having a very difficult time in this market. We have gotten insurance quotes as of today for a large portion of our portfolio. However, our most valuable assets, two of them at least, the waste energy plant and the upriver dam, we have not gotten a full package of quotes yet. They usually shop that around and spread it with a bunch of different people. We also don't have our cyber insurance quote yet, and the quote for our liability blanket, which is problematic. We however do have calls with our broker on both Wednesday and Thursday, and hopefully we'll be able to finalize a package so that I can get to the council by the end of this week, the recommendation that hopefully the council can, will feel comfortable and can take action on next Monday. We want to have this insurance in place by midnight on August 31st when our current insurance expires. So, be happy to answer any questions. I think the two things that the broker tells us is COVID has really upset the market, more so because the variant is, is coming back in. And secondly, a number of companies that write some of the lines of insurance that we've purchased in the past are not writing in this market anymore, so they're having to remarket it to new insurers who know less about the city. So, it's just taking them longer than it normally would. As soon as we have more information, though, I'll get it to you. And we may have to look at options if we don't get it in time for you to look at it for next meeting, like taking action at the Thursday study session, noting a special meeting for purposes of approving the insurance, because we want to give ourselves a couple of days to make sure that we can get everything signed. Any questions? Okay, then next we move to a recommended low bid for grind and overlay project, and Dan Buller from Engineering is here to present this.
Good afternoon. Item four is the proposed low bid contract for the 2021 arterial grind and overlay projects with Inland Asphalt of Spokane for $937,199.10, to which we propose to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. This project grinds and overlays various arterials around town. The low bid from Inland Asphalt was approximately $49,000 or about 5% below the engineer's estimate. Two other bids were received. This work is planned yet this fall and is locally funded.
Thanks, Dan. And then the, the final two items on the proposed consent agenda are first the report of the mayor on pending claims and payments, and also on payroll claims, and those amounts will be filled in prior to the meeting next week. And then lastly, the placeholder for City Council meeting minute approval, and those blanks will also be filled in prior to next week's meeting. Then we go to the legislative agenda, and we have one special budget ordinance, and Chris Becker is here to present it relating to planning specialists. Chris?
Good afternoon. Thank you. This is a special budget ordinance for $64,840, and it will add two planning specialist positions to the Development Services Center that will facilitate permitting specifically residential and small tenant, commercial tenant improvement projects.
Thanks, Chris. Next we move to resolutions. The first resolution is one that I'm presenting, but the council sponsor, Councilwoman Wilkerson, has asked that we defer this for a week or until August 30th, which I'm certainly fine with.
Thank you.
And we will be giving some more information for Councilwoman Wilkerson, and possibly other council members that have questions as well.
And I'd like to follow up on, hold on, Mike, hang on. I had a question, and then I just want to make sure we have the correct date. Councilmember Wilkerson, was it just a one-week deferral, or were you looking to do it until September? Because one week from August 23rd would be August 30th?
Actually, it's the 30th. There were some other things going on with sheltering issues that we want to address in the funding, so the 30th would be my request.
All right. So, do you want to put that in a form of a motion?
I so moved to defer Resolution 0069 until August 30th.
Is there a second? Councilmember Burke seconded. Councilmember Cathcart had a question. Councilmember Cathcart had a question, then you, Councilmember Stratton.
Uh, nope. Just an idea. We needed a motion. That's all.
Councilmember Stratton?
No, I just wanted to make sure you saw that Councilmember Cathcart had a question.
Got it. Just trying to keep it in order here. Thanks, everyone. All right. If there are no other questions, all in favor of deferring Resolution 69 until August 30th, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Thank you. Mr. Ormsby?
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Council President Protam. Next, we have a sole source declaration for Pomegranate and Associates, and Shawna Harshman from Council Staff is presenting this item.
And before we turn it over to Shawna, we had a substitute sent around this morning, and we have a motion for Mr. Cathcart.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we substitute the version of 2021 0070. That's what we should have in their emails.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Wilkerson seconded, and any discussion? Just the contract wasn't complete. That was the, the detail there. All right. All in favor for the substitution?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, Shawna, please brief. In case my mic wasn't on, Shawna, could you possibly brief us on the Pomegranate Associates sole source program?
Absolutely. Can you hear me now, councilmembers? I was watching online and had to quickly join the meeting. Apologies. So, what we're looking at high level on the Pomegranate Associates contract is that for the new traffic calming program that is rolling out later this fall, there's a very significant community engagement component where we'll be doing workshops with all 29 neighborhoods. And so, we were seeking a consultant who could do a couple of different things for us in this contract. The first was to train city staff in a particularly collaborative community engagement technique that they have really coined over the years at Pomegranate and Associates. And the second piece was services to help us design those neighborhood workshops. And the reason that we have gone with the sole source contract on this is that Pomegranate and Associates were the only provider that we could find that did both of those, both of those components of what we were looking for. So, anticipated funding for this would come from one of two places, either from ARPA funds, or we have the funding available in the traffic calming budget currently. Happy to answer any other questions.
Shawna, I just want to thank you for your work on this, and I do want to say that I think that this is an excellent, it's an excellent resource, especially for our neighborhoods, and I think that it will provide them with a certain amount of confidence that the city believes in the work that they do, and that we're providing this training to help them and assist them make their neighborhoods better. So, I really appreciate your work on this.
Thank you, councilmember.
Not seeing anyone else with a question or comment, Council President Protam and members of the council. That would conclude the advanced agenda for the August 23rd meeting.
Thank you. Before I take a motion to approve the advanced agenda, I just want to poll our council. This leaves us with two items for next Monday night's meeting, the SBO, and then this resolution on Pomegranate Associates. If you're interested in consolidating that to the 3:30, we do have a proclamation and a neighborhood presentation also scheduled for that Monday night, but we could reschedule it. But I just wanted to ask you what you would like to do. I'll put it this way. How many would like to keep it at 6:00 PM? Show me hands. How many would like to keep it at 6:00 PM? How many would like to consolidate? Show of hands. All right, that's a majority. Then I'll take a motion to approve and move the time at once, if someone could do that for me.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, just to be clear, our, our meeting-
Does Councilmember Cathcart have another comment?
If I, don't miss you, Councilmember Cathcart.
Mike, she has something else?
No. He's just quick on the draw. So, to be clear, we will hold both our briefing session and our legislative meeting at 3:30 next Monday, and we will work to reschedule the other two items. Thank you, everyone. Now, let's move on to tonight's council agenda briefing. Mr. Ormsby?
Thank you, Council President Protam. So, the consent agenda for this evening is a little bit longer. First, we have a proposed value blanket renewal for backflow prevention devices, and Lauren Searle from the Water Department is here to brief this.
Good afternoon, council. This is a renewal of our current value blanket with Keller Supply for purchase of backflow prevention devices. It's one-year renewal with Keller. This, although we did do negotiations and competitive bidding through this, we're still coming in with a 26% increase in this year's value blanket. We propose a approval of a one-year value blanket totaling $162,500.
Not seen any questions. We'll move on to, we have a couple of sets of agreements that Dan Buller's going to present. The first involves a couple of low bids, and then the second involves retention of two consultants to assist on civil, for civil engineering services. So, Dan, take it away.
Thank you. Item 2A is proposed low bid contract for the 2021 Residential Grind and Overlay South project with Shamrock paving of Spokane for $1.485 million, to which we propose to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. This project grinds and overlays various projects, various residential streets, rather, around town. Low bid from Shamrock was approximately $195,000 or about 15% below the engineer's estimate. One other bid was received. This work is planned yet this fall and is locally funded. Item 2B is a proposed low bid contract with, for the North River Drive sidewalk with La Riviera of Rathbrough, Idaho for $1.028 million approximately, to which we also propose to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. This project infills a missing gap of sidewalk connecting several hotels to Riverfront Park and the new Sportsplex. Also included a various stormwater treatment upgrades, street trees, and a grind and overlay. The low bid was approximately $117,000 or about 13% below the engineer's estimate. One other bid was received. This work is planned yet this fall. It's partially funded with the state grant, and the remainder local funds, including arterial street fund and sewer department funds. And moving on, items 3A and 3B are the proposed on-call contracts for general civil engineering with consultants listed on your sheets. These consultants were selected via an RFQ process in accordance with state law. Costs incurred under these contracts will be paid for as part of each public works project for which the consultant is used. Proposed contract with Parametrics is for $600,000, and with HDR for $400,000.
Any questions for Dan? Okay, next we move with a, to a proposed contract for the Green Fleet Implementation Development Plan, and Rick Giddings is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Fleet Services is requesting the approval of a contract with Frontier Energy for the development of the city of Spokane's Green Fleet Implementation Plan. We anticipate this plan will be used for the foreseeable future as a guideline for vehicle purchases, purchases, as well as electric and biofuel infrastructure planning in order to help us reach our goal that 100% of city-owned or leased vehicles be powered by electricity or biofuel by the year 2030. Under the terms of contract, Frontier Energy will analyze the city's fleet, including fuel type and consumption, develop a replacement plan that completely replaces the fleet with electric or clean-fueled vehicles, develop an electric and alternative fuel infrastructure plan defining timeframes and costs, identify funding strategies available to cities such as grants, incentives. The plan should also identify goals and milestones for implementation over the next 10 years. Frontier Energy has a very well-qualified team in place, vast experience working with municipalities on green fleet transition and implementation programs. The total cost would be $97,755, or $97,755, not including sales tax. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Rick. Next, we have two recommendations to be listed on the Spokane Register of Historical Places, and Megan Duvall from the Historical Preservation Office is here to present these two items.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Good afternoon, council. Share my screen. Sure. Okay. You've seen this before. You can probably all do this yourself. But I'll quickly go through what the Spokane Register is. It's our local program voluntary, requires the consent of the owner for listing, and we protect these resources through a management agreement, which is what the contract is you're signing. Design review is only when a building permit is sought for the exterior changes to the building, and it's how we offer incentives to historic property owners. In order to be eligible, the property has to meet, at least be 50 years of old generally, and it also has to meet one of the criteria in our municipal code. We can list buildings, sites, district structures, or objects. I had a little bit ahead of myself there. And here's the categories. We have five. Category A is broad patterns of history. Category B is in association with a significant person. Category C is for architecture, design, or construction. D is our prehistory or archaeology category, and E is cultural heritage. So, today we have two nominations from the Spokane School District, so let me get into this. Completed in 1912 with significant additions, demolitions, and remodels in both 2001 and 2020, Lewis &amp; Clark High School located at 521 West Fourth Avenue is an outstanding example of early public school architecture in Spokane, and is one of only two excellent high school structures from Spokane's period of greatest growth. Lewis &amp; Clark High School is significantly, is historically significant under Category A for its direct contribution to the broad pattern of educational development in Spokane. Three schools have existed on the site of Lewis &amp; Clark High School. The wood-framed Central School that housed all grades was erected in 1883. This structure was moved to another site, and Spokane High School was completed in 1891. At the completion of North Central High School in 1908, the building was renamed South Central High School. After a fire in 1910 that destroyed the school, architect L.L. Rand designed the collegiate Gothic Lewis &amp; Clark High School, which was completed in 1912. Changes to Lewis &amp; Clark occurred rather recently. The first major renovation or remodel of the school took place in 2001. That project removed the 1964 E.L. Squinty Hunter Field House, as well as the 1908 administration, also known as the Annex Building, which was located to the east of the historic school building. A new gym was constructed across Stevens Street, connected to the new addition by a skywalk. In 2020, a new commons and classroom building was constructed where the previous gym had been. Lewis &amp; Clark High School is also eligible under Category C as a resource that embodies, sorry, the distinguishing characteristics of its type and period of construction, as well as its association with a master architect, that being Lauren Rand. Even though most of his schools have been demolished, Rand was the premier architect of Spokane's early elementary schools, and also designed Lewis &amp; Clark High School. Rand originally planned to use parts of the burned South Central High School in the design of the new school, but ultimately provided an up-to-date, completely new collegiate Gothic-style building for the building. Inspired by great universities in England but adapted for a high school, the building is an important example of Rand's work. Although Lewis &amp; Clark had been, have been altered over the years with a major renovation and additions in 2001 and the addition in 2019, 2020, the original classroom building retains integrity of location, material, design, setting, and workmanship. The nomination was reviewed and recommended for listing on the Spokane Register of Historic Places under both Category A and Category C at a public hearing of the Spokane Historic Landmarks Commission on July 21st, 2021. So, our second building is actually a nomination for Libby Junior High School. Originally built in 1928 and receiving a substantial addition in 1961, Libby Junior High School is located on the 2900 block of East First Avenue. It is a good example of a type and period of construction, specifically Spokane education buildings in the first few decades of the 20th century. The school is located in East Central Spokane, where it has served students from one of the most demographically diverse areas of the city. Libby Junior High meets Spokane Register of Historic Places Category A for its association with a theme of education, specifically the spread of junior high schools across the United States, and the construction of the first junior high schools in Spokane. Libby Junior High School and its companion on the north side, Havre Mail Junior High School, were the first junior high schools to be built in the Spokane School District, both in 1928. The typical school system at that time had consisted mainly of just elementary or grade schools, and then high schools. So, this was seen as the grade seven through nine was an innovation and reorganization of the pattern of secondary education in the United States. Libby Junior High School meets Spokane Register of Historic Places Category C as well, as a property that embodies the distinctive characteristics of a type and period of construction, specifically Spokane education buildings in the first few decades of the 20th century. The 1928 building is typical of the classically inspired grade school buildings that were popular in Spokane between 1900 and 1920. Raised basement podium with a short run of steps to the first floor, two-story brick facade dominated by banks of windows, classical proportions and design elements with a cornice and parapet wall. The property is also significant under Category C for its association with a father-and-son pair of Spokane architects who both designed portions of the school during their respective careers. The building was designed by two generations of Van Tynes, Roland Van Tyne for the original classically inspired 1928 building, and his son Carl for the mid-century modern 1961 addition that you see here. Both architects had notable careers, and at least four of Roland's buildings are listed on the Spokane Register of Historic Places, including one elementary school, Hutton Elementary. This building would be Carl's first attribution on the Spokane Register. The property's period of significance is identified as 1928 to 1971, starting when the 1928 building was constructed, and ending with the final 1971 addition. The 1971 addition used lower-quality materials and lacks the distinct design elements of the earlier buildings. However, the repeated additions to Libby show the nature of school development as the district worked to provide services to a growing city. You can still see that there's lots of portables out there for the Odyssey program in Spokane. Although the integrity of the original classroom building, as well as the 1961 addition, have been diminished by energy upgrades from the 1980s and the replacement of some of the original windows in the 1928 building, the 1928 and 1961 buildings retain much of their original form materials detailing and high level of craftsmanship. Libby Junior High School is recognizable for both its function as a public school and its original architectural style. The nomination was reviewed and approved by the Spokane Historic Landmarks Commission at a July 21st public hearing for listing on the Spokane Register of Historic Places under Categories A and C. That concludes my staff report.
I'll just jump in, Megan.
Any questions or comments for Megan?
Yeah, I'll just jump in real quick. Megan, I'm shocked these aren't already on. I, I'm just so surprised, and so glad that they're bringing these forward. I think there's more schools then. I think that would be really interesting to see, you know, how many more we could bring forward. But I just saw a hand go up. Was that Councilmember Cathcart? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I was just wondering. So, you mentioned, you know, how many changes have been made to these schools throughout the years. And so, I guess, what would be the limitations if these are added to the registry? What would be the limitations on future redevelopment or future modifications to these schools?
So, you know, it's kind of interesting. Can you hear me? Because I can't tell. I just went, okay, thank you. That, basically, so Lewis &amp; Clark have been listed on the National Register of Historic Places for many, many years. Libby never has been listed on any register, but there was some controversy of folks remember back when, when that Annex Building was taken down in the 2001 remodel, and the, the new gym on the, on the other side of the street, that they actually were, were talking about maybe delisting it from the National Register, but luckily- delisting it from the National Register, but luckily, they were able to go in and do an amendment to that original nomination. I think it kind of burned the school district a little bit, they weren't very happy about it, so that's, I think, why it took so long, Councilmember Mom, too, for them to actually list it on the Spokane Register. And sometimes it's just a difference in the philosophy of the administration at the school district. They have been very proactive in listing their buildings now. So in the last couple of years, as you've noted, you know, Franklin, Wilson, these two, so it's just really exciting. Finch, so all over the city, almost really, I can't think of too many other historic school buildings that they own that aren't listed now. Adams is one that's had some major changes, but that could be adaptable. Councilmember Cathcart, I will answer your question, too. So they have gone into these listings kind of with their eyes wide open. LC obviously has just finished probably the big, major remodel that they're going to do in the next, you know, many, many years, so I don't think that they're too worried about going through design review with us for changes to that building. However, Libby, you know, there are plans for some future changes, and, you know, they understand that now what they will do is they will be going through Landmarks Commission for changes, and looking at things to make sure that the buildings are appropriately rehabbed. So it's kind of exciting for us, and we've had those conversations with them, so they're very aware.
I will only say, Megan, go Libby Lancers.
I know, isn't it exciting?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, super exciting.
The next item we have on the agenda is to receive the council's acceptance of the Consolidated Homeless Grant from the State of Washington, and Debbie Cato is here to present this.
Good afternoon. Yes, I'm here to, on behalf of CHHS, to request permission to accept a $9,611,051 grant renewal award from the Office of Family and Adult Homelessness, and sub grant funds to awardees of the CHHS five-year RFP. And just to let you know what these monies are for, the CHG monies fund Catholic Charities' Rapid Rehousing for Families Program, Catholic Charities' Permanent Supportive Housing Program. Most of these monies are for Goodwill Industries' Housing and Essential Needs Program. They also fund SNAP Singles Diversion Program, and SNAP Rapid Rehousing for Singles Program. All of the CHG projects, everything except HEN, actually, were awarded through the five-year RFP, which council approved those allocations back in 2019, and a separate RFP was conducted for the HEN program specifically, which Goodwill was awarded and approved by council in 2020. So council is being asked to accept the new grant agreement, which is for two years, and permission to subaward those funds out in accordance with the approved five-year plan. Are there any questions?
Quick question. Do you have enough manpower in your office to get this money and process it and get it out? Are you going to need extra help to get that done?
Before, these are funds that Matt Davis managed before he left, and so he got all the grant requests completed before he left, on the assumption that council would approve this.
Okay.
So we're ready to move.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for Debbie? Thank you, Debbie.
Yes, thank you.
Next, we have the third proposed contract amendment for some BNSF inspection work, and Kevin Pakenko is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, Council. This is item number seven, contract amendment with Wilson &amp; Company for additional costs to complete BNSF inspection work associated with our City of Spokane water and sewer replacement projects in the vicinity of Cleveland and Grace. This utility work and relocation is associated with washdocks, no Spokan corridor construction. This amendment amount is for $24,813, bringing the total contract amount to $174,073.
Thank you, Kevin. The next item is the First Amendment to the Foundation Grant to the City of Spokane for the Floridation Program. And Marlene Feis, the Director of Public Works and Utilities, is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, Council. This amendment would allow the city to spend up to $600,000 for a comprehensive design and engineering study related to adding a floridation system to the city's water system. The amendment in particular allows the city to move forward with this study without having to repay those dollars, and it's truly a grant for the study, and we will be coming out with an RFQ to seek proposers for the study, and we'll bring that back to council in the next couple of months, if council approves this amendment.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Thanks, Marlene. Good explanation. I hope the public was listening. I wanted to make it very clear that this is in no way saying we are going to floridate water, but that exactly what you said, we're putting out this RFQ to get the engineering study done, to see what the feasibility is, and so if down the road we decide that this needs to go on the ballot for an advisory vote, the voters will be informed of the cost and what it would take to actually implement something like this. So in no way is it saying we are going to floridate, it is merely an RFQ at this point. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Then we'll move to item number nine, which is a proposed contract to refurbish metal refuse and recycling dumpsters, and Justin Bender, excuse me, is here to present this item.
Hi, good afternoon. We're seeking, Saltways Collections is seeking approval for a five-year master contract with Lynn Machine and Manufacturing in Spokane Valley to refurbish, repair, and repaint existing steel containers, whether they be small rearload, frontload, or large roll-off containers. And the value of that, the annual expenditure is estimated not to exceed $670,000, which would include tax.
Justin, I have a question. I'm guessing this is going to save us money. I don't, we don't do this right now, and how much will this save us?
We do do it now. We have an expiring contract, so, for example, a new Dropbox is an excess of $10,000. So if we refurbish one, it's a $2,000 repair, or refurbishment, paint, whatever it may be. It's a considerable savings, and it keeps our steel stock fresh, whether it's graffiti, you know, there could be wear and tear, whatever it is, but it's significant savings over buying, building, and shipping in new steel.
Thank you.
Okay, not seen any other questions. The next item are, is the Report of the Mayor on the Payment of Claims and Other City Payments, also Claims and Payments for, with Parks and Libraries and without, and then finally, payroll claims through August 7. And finally, there are council meeting minutes for July 26 that are on the agenda for approval. Moving then to the legislative session, there is one proposed budget ordinance, and Megan Duvall, oh, she is still with us, is hopefully still here with us, and she's going to brief the council on this item.
This is basically the exempt position that was approved back in February or March of this year. We identified a classified position called a planning specialist, and we would like to convert the exempt position to the classified position. It is a, it's budget neutral, so it's just moving that money into a classified position.
And I guess I would ask the council, too. Would you like Megan to be at the meeting this evening to present this in the open session?
I think everyone looks good. Thanks, Megan.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Next, we go to emergency ordinances, and the first one is an ordinance amending conditions for the city to grant exemption from certain impact fees, and the associated amendments in the municipal code, and Council President Beggs is the sponsor and presenter of this item.
Brian's going to do that for me.
Okay.
And James Richmond is here also. Mr. McLatchy.
Thank you, councilmembers. This ordinance would amend the process, or amend the criteria by which council considers impact fee exemptions. It makes clear that some strategic reserve funds would be earmarked to pay the impact fees, and then would adopt a matrix, a scoring matrix, so that projects that rise to the level of being, driving the city forward on some strategic objectives, would be able to take advantage of the impact fee exemption. We are in a moratorium right now on the acceptance of applications for impact fee exemptions, and to that end, I ask James Richmond for some input on process as we move through the moratorium and out of it. I don't know if he's on the call here.
Yes, he is.
I'm here, Brian.
Okay, thank you, James.
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, because the impact fee exemptions, or our impact fee program is found in Title 17 of the code, anytime we want to amend Title 17, the code sets forth a process for amending Title 17, which incorporates the Growth Management Act public notice and participation requirements. So there's a Plan Commission workshop, and some public notice, and then eventually a Plan Commission hearing, where they make a recommendation to the city council. So hopefully, all of that can get accomplished while the moratorium is in effect.
So Council President Protam, I think a recommendation would be, or the, probably the right way to go, would be to refer this item to the Plan Commission. James, is that what I'm hearing from you?
Yes, yes, I think so.
Is there a motion to refer to the Plan Commission, Ordinance C 36092?
Second.
Thank you to our lawyers, who are keeping us safe and straight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, next item.
Great. The next item Ryan is also presenting on involving requirements for adaptive reuse of historic properties.
I believe this is Councilmember Wilkerson's item, but just to tee it up really quickly, if that's all right, Councilmember Wilkerson? Okay. So this ordinance would allow historic reuse of parcels, not under current law, only the structure itself would be eligible for historic reuse. So this would expand that definition to include the entire parcel, and allow the historic reuse of the building, and the further development of the rest of the parcel. This also kind of tweaks the process to give the Historic Preservation Commission, of course, Historic Landmarks Commission, a little bit more of a voice, and removes the requirement that the property be listed on the National Register, and only requires that it be listed on the Spokane Register. So it kind of streamlines the process for historic reuse, and allows a more economical use of property, for the entire property, rather than simply restricting the historic reuse ability to the structure itself.
And with that being said, due to the summer and inability to get together, we are asking, I'm making a motion to defer this to September 20, so we can work with all the parties involved in this going forward. So ask for a deferral, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think we had a, Councilmember Kinnear. All right, discussion. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering, Councilmember Wilkerson, what are the issues that you're looking to correct in the ordinance?
We have not had conversations with the Historical Department, or with Chris Becker's Department, on some implications with this change going forward. There are some other legal concerns, so Brian could be more specific on that, but mostly, we have not really got our heads together to get this to move forward.
So the main change would be, the main problem that this is trying to address is that, under our current historic reuse requirements, the structure could be used in sort of a non-conforming zone situation, but if there's a structure that's on a larger parcel, the historic reuse is not available for the remainder of the parcel. So you would actually have one building on the parcel that could be used in a way that doesn't, that conforms with adjacent zones, but the rest of the parcel would only be able to be used for those adjacent-zone uses. So for example, if there's an historic building that's in an industrial zone, and it's one building on a larger parcel, the building could be reused for something that doesn't conform with the industrial zone, but the remainder of the parcel on which that building exists could only be used for industrial. So it sort of is at cross purposes with the whole notion of historic reuse in some situations that are existing in our city, and I don't believe there are that many of them, to be honest, so it's kind of a change that won't have a tremendous impact across the entire city in a lot of situations. So it's just kind of a cleanup to make sure that there's consistency in the historic reuse ordinance.
Any other discussion or questions? All right. All in favor of deferring until September 20? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Next item.
Thank you. Now we go to resolutions and final reading ordinances, and George Doll is here from CHHS to approve the 2021 Action Plan component of the consolidated plan for various programs, and George, take it away.
Yeah, thanks, Mike, and good afternoon, city councilmembers. So this ordinance, or this resolution is doing, just as Mr. Armby said, we're approving the 2021 Annual Action Plan. This includes the CDBG home and ESG programs, so these are entitlement programs that we administer through the City of Spokane, pass through to our partner agencies for services related to low, moderate-income individuals. And this was briefed at the July 26 Public Infrastructure, Environment, and Sustainability Committee. Any questions?
Thank you, George. Next, we go to first reading ordinances, and we'll just combine that with the hearing item, which is next on the agenda, and Eldon Brown is here to cover both of those.
Good afternoon, Council. This vacation of Linton Avenue and West Avenue, those are two right-of-ways down in Peaceful Valley. I'll see if I can pull up a map here, and bring them up here. Can you see that map there yet?
No.
Another one here. Still trying to pop it up here. Still not see it yet? I'm going around various screens on here, seeing if it'll show up.
Not yet. You might have to click to share first.
Go back to it again. For some reason, it's really strange.
Here you go.
All right, can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, these two streets are Linton Avenue and West Avenue, down in Peaceful Valley. And the arbit, trying to vacate just portions of these two. They're between Riverside and Clark. The applicant owns the four lots, basically on the north side and the big one on the south side, on the north side of Riverside there. He would like to consolidate this property for development purposes. They are unimproved right-of-ways, and we absolutely have no utilities in there. There's no fiber utilities, no city utilities, no nothing. So we don't need to retain any easements. So the applicant's asking to vacate this, and we've determined the cost to be around $67,000 on this one. So we would recommend approval of this, of these vacations, subject to conditions. Any questions?
I can't see everyone, but Councilmember Kinnear is the sponsor. Councilmember Kinnear, do you want to speak to this? Councilmember Kinnear, do you want to speak to this? You're the sponsor.
I'm having a hard time hearing you. My internet's going in and out. Could you repeat it?
I was just wondering if you wanted to speak to this? You're the sponsor.
Right. And Eldon said, was eloquent, that this person is applying for this so that he can redevelop these properties.
So I'm just wondering, Eldon, if this has gone to the neighborhood council at all, or have they been notified of this?
It should have been, as far as the applications went early on. We tried to ship it around to everybody. I don't have that in front of me, but I'm assuming they were.
Could you check before tonight?
I'll see if I can find out, because we did ship it around for comments for everybody. But like I say, I don't know that 100% for sure, so I'll see what I can do.
Okay, and they have to post, right?
Yeah, they had the signs up there for about a month.
Thank you.
So they have did that. Yep.
Other questions?
Any other questions?
Looks like you're in the clear.
All right, thanks.
Last item.
I, this next item, I'm not sure whether it's being presented or whether further action has been deferred. So I would defer to Council President and/or Mr. McClatchy.
I'm going to go with Mr. McClatchy. Do we need to keep this on? We do need to have the public hearing for the moratorium, even though we've deferred this to Plan Commission, unless you think we should defer this as well.
No, I just hope that the item comes back before the moratorium expires.
But we do need to hold the public hearing tonight. Is that correct?
Hold on just a moment. Let me look at my agenda here.
I think we have legal requirements to do it soon, even if we defer the item.
Yeah, I believe so. Yes.
Okay, and Council President agrees and says he thinks we are required to hold the item tonight. So this is the public hearing regarding the Ordinance 36078, entitled in an ordinance imposing an immediate moratorium on the consideration of impact fee exemptions, setting a public hearing, and establishing a work program, and declaring an emergency.
That concludes the briefing then for today's meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Salute. Second.
And then I think we have it read, and then we approve it at the end, or how do we do that? Right? Do you read that in the record?
You want to approve the agenda since it wasn't briefed before?
Okay.
And then I'll read the consent agenda.
All right, we'll do it that way. So I apologize. Well, my request is to approve the entire agenda. So I believe we need to table the consent.
I will amend my, I'll amend my amendment. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the entire agenda for August 16? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, great. Now we will have the clerk read the consent agenda for potential approval. Thank you.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, value blanket renewal with Keller Supply Company Spokane/Washington for backflow prevention devices for final annual term. Estimated annual cost $162,500, including tax. Number two, low bids of A. Shamrock Paving Incorporated for 2021 residential grind and overlay projects, south, $1,485,000. An administrative reserve of $148,500, which is 10% of the contract price, will be set aside. Cliff Cannon, Manitow Canon Hill, and Comstock Neighborhoods. Two B, La Rivera Incorporated, Roethrum, Idaho, for the North River Drive sidewalk, $128,674. An administrative reserve of $102,867.40, which is 10% of the contract price, will be set aside. Riverside Neighborhood. Number three, consultant agreements for on-call civil engineering services for 2021/2023 projects, non-federal, with A. Parametrics Incorporated not to exceed $600,000. B. HDR Engineering Incorporated, amount not to exceed $400,000, various neighborhoods. Number four, contract with Frontier Energy, San Raymond, California, for the Green Fleet EV and Biofuel Implementation Development Plan, $97,755 plus tax. Number five, recommendations to list the following on the Spokane Register of Historical Places, A. Libby Junior High School, 2912 East First Avenue, and B. Lewis &amp; Clark High School, 521 West Fourth Avenue. Number six, accept the Consolidated Homeless Grant Award from the Washington State Office of Family and Adult Homelessness and approve to subaward funds in accordance with the CHHS five-year RFP. Number seven, third contract amendment with Wilson &amp; Company Albuquerque, New Mexico, for additional costs to complete BNSF inspection work associated with the COS Regal Cleveland-Greece Water and Sewer Replacement Project associated with Wasdott-NSC Construction, $24,813. Total contract amount $174,073. Number eight, First Amendment to Accora Foundation and City of Spokane Grant Agreement related to Floridation, allowing the city to proceed with a comprehensive engineering studies, $600,000. These funds would not have to be repaid regardless of whether the city proceeds with the Floridation system. Number nine, five-year master contract with Lynn Machine &amp; Manufacturing Incorporated, Spokane Valley/Washington, refurbish metal refuse and recycling dumpsters. Estimated annual expenditure $670,000, including tax. Number 10, report of the mayor of Penning A, Claims and Payments Approved Obligations, including those of Parks and Library, through July 30, 2021. Total $9,60,431.73. With Parks and Library Claims Approved by their respective boards, warrants, including Parks and Library, total $7,096,489.54. B. Claims and Payments Approved Obligations, including those of Parks and Library, through August 6, 2021. Total $6,931,517.40. With Parks and Library Claims Approved by their respective boards, warrants, including Parks and Library, total $4,614,650.10. C. Payroll Claims Approved Obligations, through August 7, 2021. Number 11, City Council Meeting Minutes for July 26, 2021.
Thank you. Now for that motion to approve the consent agenda.
Salute.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. And unless there's nothing further, I think we have done it, and we will see you at 6:00 tonight. Thank you, everyone.